The September 8th, 2025 Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board welcomes everyone present. The Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and to become future-ready within the greater community. This is a business meeting of the Board of Education, and we are pleased that you have taken time to join us. For the roll call, all Board members are present? Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our color guard tonight is from the Southeast High School JROTC program. Please stand for the presentation of the colors, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
March on, march. Color guard, halt. Left, face. Ma'am. Present, arms. Ma'am, permission to post the colors, ma'am.
You may post the colors.
Thank you, ma'am. Order, arms. Colors reversed, march. Color guard, halt. Outward, face. Forward, march. Color guard, halt. Ready. Pose. Rear, march. Present, arms. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. About, face. Forward, march.
Thank you to our color guard. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one is the intent to exceed revenue-neutral rate, and this public hearing is open. The state statute requires the Board to hold a public hearing on the intent to exceed revenue-neutral rate in the 2025-26 budget. The purpose of the hearing is to hear and answer objections of taxpayers relating to the tax rate and mills in the proposed budget, which exceeds the revenue-neutral rate by providing, by provided by the Sidret County Clerk. Members of the public who have registered to speak in accordance with the requirements published in tonight's agenda may address the Board. Following receiving of the statements by the public, the Board President will close the public hearing. The Board will have the opportunity to ask questions if necessary following the public hearing. A resolution authorizing a levy of property taxes to finance the 2025-26 budget exceeding the revenue-neutral rate is required after the public hearing under the KSA 79-2988. Do we have any public speakers for this evening?
Linda Runner.
Welcome, Linda. Go ahead and come on up. A speaker's comments will be limited to the budget but will not include personal matters concerning the district employees and are matters that would violate the privacy of students, and will be limited to three minutes. Yeah, come on up to the microphone right here. Right there is perfect. Thank you.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
It's for the online audience.
Oh, okay. Well, the taxes on my house has gone up, and it's because most of the education on my taxes. And my taxes have gone up the last six years a lot. But they don't do nothing, I mean, I don't know, I don't know why it's going up, because they don't do nothing to the streets or nothing like that to keep the streets up or the trees. And I don't have kids, and they keep raising my taxes for education. I've never had kids. So I don't understand why the reason my taxes for the kids when I don't have kids. I think the people with kids should pay the taxes for the kids, because I've never had kids. And for 50 years, I've been paying taxes for the kids. I don't know what else to say. It's sad. It's really sad that do not do anything with the taxes that I'm paying for. And I've already paid 2025 taxes, but they still don't do nothing with the streets or the trees. And so what do they do with this money that all these, all those people are paying taxes for? What are they doing with it? I don't see anything. Well, I'm not sure what else to say.
Thank you for being here.
If, I think they, I think some of these kids need to have some more niceness to people instead of all these killings. Because if that's what the schools are going to nowadays, it's not right. It's just totally not right. Something needs to be done in these schools so these kids aren't killing everybody else. It's so sad. It's going around every place. And it's the 14-year-olds, the 15-year-olds, the 17-year-olds, and they're all in June High and High School. What is happening? Are the, is it the teachers? Is it the schools? What's the scoop? I mean, if that's what the education is doing to the kids nowadays, what's going on? Is it the parents? Is it the kids? I mean, where the, where the kids are getting this from? And they're going to our schools, and they're still doing this. It wasn't like this when I was growing up. I graduated '73. We never seen this kind of stuff in schools, never, ever.
Thank you, thank you, Linda. We appreciate you being here tonight.
You guys have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker? Welcome, Mr. Mayor, Bel Air.
Thank you, and good evening. So as our chairman has said, I am the mayor, Jim Benage, I am the mayor of Bel Air. USD, USD 259 serves the west side of Bel Air, and the east side is served by USD 375. So we appreciate that 259 has expanded access for Bel Air residents to Isley Elementary and Northeast High School. This is a start to move closer to serve Bel Air students in the way that was originally promised by the USD 259 in support of the 2008 bond issue. But people all over the state are crying for property tax relief. As mayor, I get it. I fully understand the struggles of balancing tax relief while serving the needs of others, our constituents. Next year, USD 259 will retire one bond, but this budget replaces the cost of that bond with an increase in general property tax. This is just a shuffle. USD 259 will collect more money but no longer has the bond payment. So 259 also has declining student population, so it's hard to justify increasing spending while the student population is in decline. In Bel Air, we have been reducing our mill levy year over year for the last five years, all while population increased by about 25%. This year, our projected mill levy decrease is 1.484 mills. Don't misunderstand, I'm not saying we're reducing our budget or taxes. Our budget will reduce the mill levy, which may result in reduced taxes for some property owners. USD 259's budget effectively increases the mill levy 2.011 by shuffling the bond payment decrease to operations. Of the six taxing authorities that comprise my property taxes, USD 259 is only one, is the only one to effectively increase projected mill levy. The only one of six taxing authorities, and you represent 33% of the property taxes that I pay. I have developed a formula for targeting budgets in Bel Air. I have tasked, taken last year's budget and divided by last year's population. I then multiply that per capita budget by the Consumer Price Index for the next year. I then multiply this inflation-adjusted per capita budget by the current population. Our 2026 budget is slightly over this target, but the formula gave our city staff a target of budget development to instead of following the tradition process of grabbing all the increases in property assessed valuations. I suggest that USD 259 adopt a similar budget process for targets, only replace the population with the number of students. I believe you will find that you are growing your budget faster than the rate of inflation, maybe faster than the rate of growth in assessed valuations. A group did an in-depth study of WOGE analysis of the city of Wichita. Maybe a similar project would be appropriate for USD 259. If you can help, we need, if you need help, we'll help you with changes. Thank you for your services, 259.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Latona? Okay, are there any other public comment speakers for the revenue-neutral hearing? Seeing none? You may make a comment.
I kind of feel like on the revenue, when you look at a lot of what the issue is about, you know, it's tearing down small schools or building more schools. But if you go online and you look at what the, say, proficiency, you know, the math proficiency rate is of the high school, it's an embarrassing low, 13%. That's just half of, that's less than half of what the state average proficiency in math is. I think our focus is not, should not be on buildings and tearing things down or, you know, all of this. If we can't get the proficiency up, it's, it's only at 20% for English, 13% for math. And it's just the endless taxes. A homeowner, pay, 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 and my taxes have gone up on a very small two-bedroom, one-bath home, $19,000 in this year that I peeled, and of course, that's a phone conversation, you won't win, but my taxes have gone up, you know, 10% in 2020, 10%, 7%, 8%, 6%, 16% last year. And we have less students. Why we're going down the path of more buildings or getting rid of old buildings when we're not achieving the real goal, which would be in education? I feel the focus has really drifted, and people are not, you're not focused on what the important part of this is. Maybe the whole accounting department for USD 259 is off, or maybe you're not focusing on education. But that's embarrassing low. I'm mortified when I looked that up, 13% in math. And I, and my taxes just go up and up and up, and the idea of tearing down schools is the, the amount of students we have has gone down since 2015. I've done a ton of research on this, and I just don't agree. If we don't focus on curriculum, what are we focusing on? Right? Do we not want to have the best kids we can educate? Should that not be the goal? It should be the goal. And I don't know if anybody else agrees with that, but I can't see my taxes going up to produce, buy more, build more, buy more, when we're not producing a good, we're not, our proficiency rates for what the students are learning isn't there. It's not there. It's embarrassing low. That's what I have to say. I'm tired of.
And can you state, ma'am, ma'am? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name's Cassie Dollinger, and my address is 1715 North Meridian.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Joanne Hubbard. My address is 1143 South Governor. And I'm a homeowner. I believe as a baby boomer, we all look, look to growing up and living the American dream, that's owning a home. But within the last few years, it, those increase in taxes have literally made it very impossible. In the last few years, I have paid over $50,000 in taxes. I have appealed and appealed for year, the last four years, I lost. This year, I kind of managed to win. It's a win-win. My neighbor across the street, she owns, she, and I, you know, I'm not going to give her address, but she owns, she has a patio, she has a balcony, her house and a swimming pool. And she just pays 2,000 more than I do. And so, you know, and I am approaching being senior, where I'm ready to retire, and I think there should be some type of relief for seniors. I think we've paved the way as pioneers, we have been great examples as baby boomers. I think there should be some relief for us, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Okay, seeing none? I move that we close this first hearing for the intent to exceed revenue-neutral rate. Is there a second? Motion made by Diane, seconded by Julie. On favor, raise your hand. Or wait, we got to do roll call vote, I'm sorry. For the roll call vote, knock?
No.
Oh, not for this one? Okay. My apologies. We will do the hand raising for the vote. So all in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. For the second public hearing of the evening, it is for the proposed 2025-26 budget. The public hearing is now open. The state statute requires that the Board hold a public hearing on the proposed 2025-26 budget. The purpose of the hearing is to hear and answer objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed budget and for the purposes of considering amendments to the proposed budget. Members of the public who have registered to speak in accordance with the requirements published in tonight's agenda may address the Board. Following receiving of statements by the public, the Board President will close the public hearing. The Board will have the opportunity to ask questions if necessary during the finance presentation. The Board will be asked to adopt the 2025-26 budget following the public hearing. Do we have any speakers for this evening?
Jessica Amir.
Welcome, Jessica.
Members of the Board, Superintendent Beilafeld, good evening. My name is Jessica Amir, and I'm a leader with UTW, a Wichita resident, a teacher in the district, and my children attend Wichita Public Schools. I have a vested interest in the success of our schools. The success of our future community depends on our schools teaching our students. I'm here to speak to you this evening about an issue that affects staff and students alike in the vast majority of our buildings, consistent air conditioning. It may not seem pertinent now, when it's between 60 and 70 degrees outside, but a few short weeks ago, there were classrooms across this district whose temperatures were over 80 and 90, and in one case I know of personally, 100 degrees during the first week of school in the gym at Truistell. Our school service center stepped up and needed repairs were made, but the reason I'm speaking to you is because this is an issue we see year after year. A staff member from my building, Wilbur Middle School, said that for the past 14 years, one air conditioning unit in our building continues to fail, making their rooms unusable when temperatures are high. And we do have staff in our building that have health conditions that make it impossible for them to be in their classrooms. For any of you who have been a teacher, you know how hard it is to pick up everything on a dime and move. But I will say, I'm fortunate to be in a building with gregarious staff, and during those times, there are flurries of emails from staff members across the building saying, "My room is available during my plan," or "during my lunch at this given hour," and "I have this many seats available so that staff can teach their students somewhere that it's a bearable temperature." Folks that are nervous about spending need to be reminded that teachers' working conditions are student learning conditions. If you want to get a taste of what it's like, imagine your job is to finish checking all your email in your shed. That's what the temperatures are like. So whatever it is outside in these places that don't have controlled heat and air, you've got high humidity and you've got uncomfortable temperature. It's not what we want for our students or our staff. If we want our students to be successful, they need to be able to learn in their classrooms. And if their classrooms are unbearable, there won't be learning taking place. It's worthwhile for us to look into a more permanent solution to air conditioning problems that have been persistent year after year. Thank you.
Next speaker?
I don't have any else.
Seeing no further speakers, I move that we close the public hearing for the proposed 2025-26 budget. Motion made by Diane, seconded by Melody. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. This public hearing is now closed. Latona, next item?
Good news, Wichita Public Schools Financial Services Team recognized for effective reporting efforts.
Okay, Kelly?
Sure. Addie would, sorry, you were hiding back there. If Addie would come forward, we have some great news to share about our accounting team that does such a fantastic job for our district.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Beilafeld. I'm honored to be here this evening to recognize some of my staff for their contributions for excellence in financial reporting. This is kind of a theme recently, transparency and accountability in financial reporting, and it's something we take very seriously. Wichita Public Schools Financial Services Team, for the 33rd year in a row, has earned national recognition for excellence in financial reporting, receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, and the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Officials. These awards are the highest form of recognition in government and school district financial reporting. They reflect the district's strong commitment to transparency, accuracy, and clear communication of its financial position. The GFOA award is based on the district's annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June 30th, 2024, which met rigorous standards for clarity, completeness, and public accessibility. The ASBO notes state that receiving the award is recognition that a school system has met the highest standards of excellence in financial reporting. This dual recognition is a testament to the expertise, diligence, and integrity of our entire financial services team and truly staff across the district who support all the financial endeavors that go into spending the budget we have. So I'm honored to be able to recognize all that hard work tonight. And I'd like to bring forward some staff from not just the accounting team, where we have a very large division of multiple departments. And again, like I said, we have lots of staff across the district that are involved in all, all of our financial processes that contribute to our success in achieving these awards. So I'm only able to introduce six names to you this evening that are the key leads of some of our departments. So first up, April Webb, who is our financial reporting and project manager. Denise Fuco, our federal programs manager. I don't believe Holly Wilson is here, but she's our grants administrator and takes care of a lot of the local gifts and grants. Katrina Costner, accounting manager. Nancy Iverson, the director of accounting, controller, and assistant treasurer. And Tabine Azad, the director of budgeting. Congratulations are certainly in order for these very hardworking staff. We're honored to have them on our team.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate all your hard work.
Next up, our interim CHRO, Susan Willis, was going to come and introduce our appointment for our Native American Indian Education Program Specialist. So I'll give Susan a second to get up here.
Yes. Good evening, President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Beilafeld, and members of the Board. Yes, serving in my interim capacity as Chief Human Resources Officer, I am pleased to announce the hiring of Veronica Gillette as the new Native American Indian Education Program Specialist. Veronica brings with her 13 years of experience serving Wichita Public Schools Native American Indian Education Program as a parent involvement worker. She is returning to the district with a clear vision for strengthening the program's offerings and is eager to collaborate with staff, families, the community to ensure that the Native American Indian Education Program becomes a premier program within Wichita Public Schools. There she is in the back there. We look forward to the positive impact Veronica's leadership and experience will bring to our students and families. Thank you.
All right, and last but not least, I'll have Rob come forward. We were named a distinguished school district and received a national award, and I'll let Rob explain it.
So every year, ISTE issues three awards to three different districts, small, medium, and large. And the things that outline the distinguished district award usually are around technology, but this year is the first year that there was a merger between ASCD and ISTE. So this is both a reflection of leadership as well as technology. So whenever I think about Wichita, I think about innovation. If you look at what we have across Wichita, we have some amazing partnerships and some great things that are happening in this city. I'm grateful to have been able to go to San Antonio to kind of talk about the things that we are having. In fact, next month, we have a national COSIN site visit here, where we'll have about 100 people from across the nation coming to do a site visit here to see the things that we have going on, whether that be the Empower Ed Teacher Leadership Fellowship that we have, that Smokes is a part of, whether it be our partnership with WSU around applied learning, where we have applied learning students doing work with us and for us and learning in that environment, to creative minds and alternative learning environment, where, you know, we have students learning by doing and learning through project-based learning activities, to, you know, so a lot of our innovative practices that we have just in the district, whether it be AI guidelines or AI policies and our, and our movement toward intentional use of AI. I think we're a beacon in the Midwest, and I'm grateful to be a part of this district.
Thank you, Rob. I would say, yeah, let's give a round of applause. So the, the two, the two acronyms, if we don't all know, ISTE is the International Society of Technical Educators, so it's kind of the nationally-known tech organization. They've merged with ASCD, which is really the curriculum gold standard. I mean, that's the Curriculum Association across the nation. So to receive a national award, this, this is a pretty darn big deal, so.
I've been in education 26 years, and this is the biggest award I've ever seen a district receive, so.
Rob, if, if the community wants to understand and learn more about why the Wichita Public Schools received that award, how would they go about learning more about that information?
They can reach out to me. My email address is r-dixon, R-D-I-C-K-S-O-N, at usd259.net. Also, follow us on, you know, some of the social media. You'll see daily activities that we do, whether that be around creative minds or around the things that we're doing around technology. I just think Wichita is this place that people don't understand, and it's an amazing place to live and be a part of, so.
Okay, so for anybody that wants to learn more about kind of the innovative technologies that are happening in the Wichita Public Schools, this is Rob Dixon, and feel free to look up his contact information on our website and reach out. And he gives great tours, whether it be at the Learning Lab downtown or at our new Future Ready Center called Hack. He gives great tours, so that would be a great place for people to start to learn about the innovative technologies and things happening in the Wichita Public Schools. Thank you, Rob. Awesome. Okay, Latona, next item?
United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Katie.
Hi. Do you mind if I move this a little bit?
Yeah.
Good evening. Good evening, President Diane Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Beilafeld, and members of the Board. It seems like we've had a pretty good start to the school year. We've been in school for almost a month. Educators, when I've talked with them, they're really happy to be back with their students, and their focus- and their focus remains on giving them the best start possible to the school year. We'd like to start tonight by thanking Susan Willis and Vicky Manning in HR. They've been responsive and supportive, and we really appreciate some of those new initiatives that they are rolling out to help with some staffing issues. And we also appreciate payroll working into the weekend to fix, there was some issues with a pre-K supplemental that they worked on, so we appreciate that. One area that we feel and teachers feel still needs some clarity is the Department of Justice settlement, that code of conduct. Teachers are working hard to implement it, but the purpose of this code of conduct is consistency. We're hearing that sometimes administrators are taking Level Two incidents, and they are being addressed with Level One consequences. That lack of consistency is exactly what created these problems before, and so we want to make sure that that agreement's being followed as intended. And so we wanted to share that with you, and we'd like you to kind of follow up with that. We also have heard a couple of building level concerns. One, Jess Amir already brought up. On hot and humid days, our classrooms can feel very uncomfortable. The temps are frozen at seventy-four degrees. When I started, we used to be able to go up and down like two degrees, and now they're frozen right at seventy-four. And the humidity, especially in some of like our multi-level buildings, like taller buildings, can make it very, very warm. So I guess I was trying to see, is there a way that we can adjust temperatures slightly on those days so that teachers are complaining like I'm drenched in sweat by the time I get off work? So, not today, though. Today's been lovely. At some elementary schools, we've also been hearing that recess has been scheduled for three fifty in the afternoon. I think that families and educators all agree that recess should be a real break for kids, and when you put it at the end of the day, it doesn't serve its purpose. It's lost that break time. And if you look at research on the brain, when you're teaching reading or math, those breaks are really good for our kids, and so doing it at three fifty really doesn't seem to help. Finally, last time I was here, I talked about those continuum, the continuum program and those concerns. And Dr. Evans and Nikki Seeley has invited me, they've invited me to visit some of those programs next month, and I just wanted to say I appreciate the invitation. I feel like there's a lot of work to do, but we're very thankful for the chance to work together to support our educators and students, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Latona, next item?
Service Employees International Union.
I do not see ESAA. Is anybody else here from SEIU? Okay, seeing no one. Next item?
Public Communications.
Okay, do we have?
Patrick Murphy.
Okay. So we want to thank the public comment speakers for joining us tonight, and if you have signed up for public comment, you will have three minutes to speak, and we kindly ask that you acknowledge your allotted time, and we encourage you to share your thoughts openly and honestly, but we ask that your remarks remain focused on school-related matters and are respectful and constructive. The board will listen to your input, but will not respond during this meeting. However, we are listening and may follow up as appropriate. And we welcome our first speaker.
My name is Patrick Murphy. I live in eleven fifty-seven North Emporia. I want to address the NAIPAC and the newly appointed director. I'm here today to address some recent decisions made by the administrative body of USD259. These decisions offered what can be construed at best as an indifference towards the native students in this district, and at worst, a malicious attempt to cover up the corruption that was incurred under the leadership of the former director. After the review of documents obtained through a court request, it was determined that investigation should be done. The FBI is currently reviewing the documentation, and the US Attorney's Office will determine whether or not charges should be filed. And whether or not those charges are filed is not what is important to me. What is important to me is the fact that the newly appointed director of the Native American Education Program is among those named in the investigation. Beyond that, there are parents of Native children and members of this body that have been subject to intimidation through threats of physical violence and slandered by the present and former leadership of the NAIPAC. This group is directly connected to the newly appointed director. This group of people has denied the native parents of their rights during the last election of officers in an effort to ensure that they could influence the outcome of the election and maintain control of the NAIPAC board, actions I personally witnessed. Their self-serving attitude towards this program has shown undeniably when their expenditures were revealed earlier this year. The request uncovered that ninety percent of the hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant went directly into the pockets of the former director, his family members, and other individuals like the newly appointed director. After other expenses were paid, the kids got a whopping seventy-two cents per child. There are much more suitable candidates for this director position. This selection is not only inappropriate, it is insulting. It will continue to erode the relationship between the native community and the school district. It has undermined the educational experience of the students it was intended to serve. Understanding the historical context of a Native American education is crucial to fostering trust and building effective partnerships. Following through with this appointment demonstrates a lack of understanding of the historical implications of this decision. It is clear that the panel that made this decision was improperly formed, biased towards this individual. This person is a close associate of the last director and is also directly connected to individuals that corrupted the NAIPAC elections earlier this year. While I understand this board does not control the hiring beyond the superintendent, I wanted to bring this to your attention and go on the record with this information. I find it very hard to believe that this body was unaware.
Thank you, Patrick. There'll be follow-up. Thank you. Next speaker, Latona?
Kendrell Holly.
Welcome.
Is it possible to put the timer up there?
I don't have a mechanism.
Okay. Don't even worry about it.
Soon we'll have a timer.
Got one on my phone. Just a refresher, I'm Kendrell Holly. I'm a registered respiratory therapist with the state of Kansas, certified asthma educator, and I'm a lifelong asthmatic. I'm always up here with the board, championing for albuterol in schools. Just a quick refresher, statistics show one in ten students in Kansas has asthma. We recently got the bill passed where Wichita Public Schools, the state of Kansas, allows all school districts to stock emergency albuterol in their schools. It's not a replacement for a student's inhaler or nebulizer. It would be an emergency situation, they forgot there's it home, or they brought it in, it's empty. The handout I gave you is my recommendation for an inhaler. An inhaler is a much quicker administration route for albuterol. I actually have a personal little quick, my, I guess he'd be my great nephew, was going to miss a day of school. I was coming home from work, he was going to miss a day of school because of his asthma. His mother had given him his inhaler. He took it a couple of times, wasn't working. She didn't try. His nebulizer still didn't seem to work. Twelve-hour shift, hour and a half drive. I said, okay, I'm on my way. Let me go see. First thing I did was I saw his technique. I said, okay, I can tell you what's wrong right now. You're using your inhaler improperly. Showed him how to use it, administered it. He was able to go to school, which is why I am for inhalers as far as the administration route of albuterol. The last page of the handout I gave you is my information, because I am willing to work alongside USD259 to get these things done. I am going to work on seeing if the state of Kansas will pay for the spacers, which is the handouts that I gave you for the inhalers. If not, my next step would be I'm gonna go to these hospitals all around Kansas. Hey, we need these, because I feel buildings, technology, all of that stuff is great, but I guarantee you, it would have made a big difference in my life as a student of USD259 had I had an inhaler available as a backup at school. Now, I'm looking by my clock. I got about thirty seconds left, and I can tell you, I've talked longer than it would take to treat an asthmatic child with an inhaler. So that is my push. I'll be here next month with more information, because I'm not gonna stop until we get this done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there another speaker? Okay, seeing none. Next item?
College readiness.
Okay, Kelly?
All right, I'll invite Dr. Hatfield Solo. Dr. Hatfield Solo, all right. You know, I got a team over there, so I didn't know who was talking. So we're here talking about college readiness and goal number one and two, kind of, both, yeah.
All of the above. Yeah. You're always doing college readiness, so all of the above. Good evening. Good to see you all again. It's been a minute since I feel like we've done an academic update, and so it's good to see all of you this evening and excited to talk about college readiness and what that looks like in Wichita Public Schools. Little storytelling, a little data, maybe a whole lot of fun. We'll find out. So just a reminder, goal number one of the strategic plan, which is really where we're gonna focus on tonight, is increase academic achievement and graduation rate. So there's two parts to that goal, right, because there's an and sign in there. And so we're gonna ground a little bit of the conversation in graduation rate, but spoiler alert, we're not gonna leave the other side of that and sign alone tonight, which I think is something that's probably the most exciting, because a lot of times we look at pieces and parts instead of the entire goal altogether at once. So we're gonna ground the discussion in graduation rate, and then we will move forward. Here is just the last four years. Obviously, we do not have the class of 2025 yet. In fact, kiddos from the class of 2025 may still be working towards graduation and be considered an on-time graduate. They have through the month of September, so we want to make sure we give them as much of time as possible to do that. What you can see on the screen is both Wichita Public Schools and the state of Kansas. So a few reminders. The first reminder is that the Wichita Public Schools' goal is to get to eighty-five percent. That's the Wichita Public Schools' goal. The state of Kansas, for those of you that follow what their strategic plan is, their goal is to get to ninety-five percent as a state, as part of their leading the world in education. I want to point out a few highlights for you. The eighty-four point three percent that you see for the class of 2024 is Wichita Public Schools' highest graduation rate ever. Coincidentally, or not so much, the eighty-nine point five is also the state of Kansas's highest graduation rate ever they've had for the class of 2024. So we are working on closing that gap between us and the state of Kansas. As we go, the state goes, so the state should be very excited about the progress that we are making. The state has had a one point six percent increase in their graduation rate from 2021 to 2024. Wichita Public Schools has had a six point three percent increase. That's not literally subtracting them, that's percent change, so new minus old divided by old times a hundred is how you get that calculation, so. We're gonna pull out a couple of the subgroups to look at. Next, we're gonna look at free lunch. We're gonna look at students' free lunch. So we have, again, showing you the Wichita Public Schools and the state graduation rates. We've gone from seventy-five point four percent to eighty-two percent for students that have free lunch. The state has gone from eighty-one percent just a few years ago to eighty-four point seven. A couple highlights, again, eighty-two percent of graduates for free lunch is the highest that Wichita Public Schools has ever had, and the eighty-four point seven is the highest that the state of Kansas has ever had. So in that four years, the state has a three point eight percent change, increase in graduation rate, and Wichita Public Schools is an eight point eight percent change in graduation rate. Last, we're gonna lift out the graduation rate for students with disabilities, both Wichita Public Schools and the state. So we've gone from seventy-four point three a few years ago to eighty-one point nine. The state's gone from eighty-one point one to eighty-four point one. Surprise, surprise, the eighty-one point nine percent is our highest graduation rate ever. The eighty-four point one percent is the state's highest ever for students with disabilities. Also, the eighty-four point one percent graduation rate as a state for students with disabilities is the highest in the nation. Kansas had the highest graduation rate of students with disabilities in the United States for the class of 2024. The work that Wichita Public Schools did is a substantial part of the work of that eighty-four point one percent that we have as a state of Kansas, which allows us to be at the top. So the state in that time, three point seven percent increase, and Wichita Public Schools, ten point two percent increase. So I show all of that to you because it is part of the goal, increase academic achievement and graduation rate. But there's been some questions similar to this one on the screen floating around the universe. Are high school graduation rates a valid success indicator? Legitimate question. All questions are legitimate questions, but which graduation rate particularly for Wichita Public Schools is exceptionally important for us to consider. I'll tell you a quick story. When I was a student in high school, getting close to my senior year, that's actually when my family decided they were moving to Kansas. My dad got transferred here. He works for Cargill, so I did not grow up in this area. And they said, hey, we gotta move to Kansas, and I was like, oh, people live there. I didn't know that that was a thing, right? Chicagoland area. You weren't real sure, you know, what was in Kansas. But I remember asking my mom, hey, you know, are we gonna do graduation party, et cetera, et cetera, because, you know, we were packing up a house and moving, and my mom said, no, we will never have a graduation, high school graduation party for any of you, because that is a basic expectation of your life. That is the expectation in my household, right? That is the expectation that I grew up with. That is not the households that all of our students grow up in, which is part of the reason, a significant reason, why graduation rate is a massive measure of success for Wichita Public Schools. Class of 2025, we don't have their data yet, but we do have their data from the senior survey. Eighteen percent, let's basically call it one in five for easy math, are the very first in their families to graduate from high school. Eighteen percent are the first person in their family to earn a high school diploma. That is changing generations of families, and that's changing the economic future of Wichita Public Schools and the city of Wichita as we get more graduates with a high school diploma. Class of 2025, forty percent, forty percent, two in five, are going to be the first in their family to enroll in either a two-year school, a four-year school, or a trade school after they leave us. Forty percent. The households that some of our students grew up in look different than the household that I grew up in. I was very fortunate to grow up in a household that had that expectation of me, right? But we have to recognize the massive measure of success for our students when they are the first. Being the first anything is really hard. Being the first anything is really, really hard, because all of a sudden, you go from that pressure's not there to that pressure is there, but in a good way, because now other people can see me do this in my family, and they can do that, too. Seeing it, being it, that's a real thing, right? So breaking through and being the first in your family to graduate from high school, being the first in your family to enroll post-secondary is a huge deal, and that's why graduation rate really matters for us in Wichita Public Schools. If you're in a district where your graduation rate is ninety-eight percent, is that really the thing you're probably looking at to determine your success? Probably not, right? There's a lot of other metrics you need to look at, but graduation rate for us is absolutely something that we need to look at. A little bonus tidbit on the end, a few years ago, actually, when Kelly took the superintendent job, we had some senior survey data, and Kelly talked about our percentage of kids that were leaving high school and they didn't know what they were gonna do, the unknown, right? And the statistics around what's most likely to happen to you if you walk out of high school and you don't have a plan. What's most likely to happen to you? You end up incarcerated, or you end up dead. Those are terrible things. We don't want those outcomes for our kids. And that eighty-nine percent leaving high school with a plan, they're going to the military, they have a full-time job, they know what post-secondary institution they're going to, eighty-nine percent of our kids walked out of high school with a plan, that's a substantially higher number than we've had the last couple of years, right? And so Tim and Laura did a presentation last month about what ZELLO means and what individual plans of study are. That eighty-nine percent is directly tied to having students have an individual plan of study that works for them as an individual. So just wanted to give you those three pieces. I'm sure those numbers will come back when we get 2025, class of 2025 data, but wanted you to see those to really ground why data, but wanted you to see those to really ground why graduation rate is super important to us. But for our friends that maybe want to argue that, let's talk about all the things that are in front of that "and" sign. Increasing academic achievement. Because, here's, spoiler again, our data is going up everywhere. It's not just the graduation rate that's going up. So we are going to examine pieces of data that are connected to academic achievement that are not graduation rate. We're going to really do an investigation on that "and" sign right there. It's not an "or," it's an "and," and two things can be true at once. Our graduation rate can be increasing, and our academic achievement can be increasing at the exact same time. All right? So let's dive in. First, we're going to just flash up a couple assessment scores. Notice twenty-twenty-five says TBD, we do not have them yet. Also, the cut scores are different, the test is different. We're not going to get into a debate about that right now. I promised Kelly I'd keep my soapbox over in the corner for that, but we don't have that data yet, we hope to have it soon, but they're really not comparable to the previous. So if you look, our Level Ones, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, were decreasing. Are we happy that those are the numbers? No, but are we happy that they're going in the right direction? Absolutely. The first thing you have to do to turn a boat around is to start turning the boat around, and that's what was happening with our English Language Arts. You can also see the steady increase of Level Threes and Level Fours. So we've had an eleven point nine percent decrease in our Level Ones over that three-year span, and an eleven point nine percent increase of our Threes and Fours over that same span. Here's an interesting chart for you, maybe to dive a little bit into the state assessment score. So what you see along the bottom is actually students divided out into Level One, Level Two, Level Three, and Level Four, based on their state assessment score. And then we are determining what their average ACT score was and what their graduation rate was, and we have it for us and the state. So how do we read this? If you look at Level One, okay, Wichita Public Schools' students who scored a Level One on the English state assessment, keep in mind they take that when they're sophomores, right? Their average ACT scores are thirteen point seven. The average ACT score across the state for students who score a Level One is fourteen point four. The average graduation rate for a student in Level One in Wichita Public Schools is seventy-five point four percent, and the average graduation rate for the state is seventy-seven point five percent. So I think that, right, and then you go Level Two, Level Three, Level Four. What's actually interesting about this data is if you took the old cut scores and the old Level Twos, right, which was where all the debate was, was the old Level Twos, the top half of Level Two actually had performance data that matched the Level Threes, which is why they wanted to reexamine the scores, is because the Level Two kids in ACT and in graduation rate were performing more like the Level Three kids, which is why they wanted to reexamine. You'll see similar metrics with math here in a moment, so. Explain that.
Yeah.
Kind of expand on that, why that is. Yeah, so your Level Two, right, there's the debate about the Level Two, is it proficient? Is it not proficient? Is it proficient? Is it not proficient? First of all, a score on one test on one day at one time doesn't determine your ability to succeed or not succeed in life, right? But your, in Level Two, right, when they dropped that cut score and created Level Two however many years ago, right, it actually created a debate over that Level Two and is it proficient or is it not? Because the middle of Level Two, the top half of those kids, actually, their data more matched the Level Three kids, whereas the bottom half of Level Two was like, okay, these students are performing similarly. They're performing similarly on state assessments, they're performing similarly on the ACT, they're performing similarly graduation rates, et cetera, higher still than the Level Ones, right? Level Ones was still here, bottom half of Level Twos were here, but if you took the top half of Level Twos, they actually matched the Level Three kids. And so that's a big reason why the state had to reexamine these scores, just because of that Level Two debate. Kelly, you want to get in on that?
I'll give a much more straightforward, a couple examples from my own life, and I've shared a couple of these already, but I think this clearly defines what's going to go on in the next month with the cut scores. I have a daughter who's in college now, got a two on the state assessment, which is not proficient. Lauren's talking about there being a debate, but there really is not a debate. When you guys vote for the needs assessment, you vote on Threes and Fours, right? We want to get fifty percent of our kids to Threes and Fours. So by the state's definition, a two is not proficient. Okay? So my daughter gets a two on the state assessment, in the same subject area, gets a thirty-one on the ACT, which puts her in the top ninety-five percentile in the nation, gets a six out of seven on an international baccalaureate test, international score. So me as a parent, I've got three data points. I've got an international one, a national one, and a state one, and the state one is not in line with everything else that's normed. And I think ACT and I think international baccalaureate, they know how to write tests, they know how to give tests, so I think we can trust that data. And the fact that my student wasn't proficient according to the state, as a parent, I think that's the state doing a disservice to me as a parent. I should know accurately how my kid is doing. My son, same thing, gets a two on ELA, gets a twenty-six on the ACT, right? So making this make sense, it really doesn't. The scores, the cut scores are out of whack with reality, and every parent should be thankful that we're aligning this so that it gives us accurate information. Is my kid ready for college? That's what I want to know. And hopefully, the state, with a lot of expertise, and they put a lot of work and time into this, and I know we have Wichita Public Schools folks that were involved, hopefully, these new cut scores are much more accurate so that parents are given an accurate snapshot of how their kids are doing, because that is not what we've been doing, right? Me as a parent, I don't value that score much, because it seems so out of line with all the other data points that I have as a parent that are reliable and important. So.
Perfect.
There you go.
Yeah. All right. Let's look at math. Our math data is not as good as our English data. That doesn't mean we need to hide the math. Oh, sorry, go for it, not.
Sorry, quick question.
Yep.
Can you go back? There you go. So for the ACT score, is that a composite of English and reading, or is that just like the composite of the, everything in general?
Is that a composite? Say that one more time.
Yep.
It's their composite score, not their English ACT score. Yep, their composite, yep. I asked a lot of our research and intelligence people for the data, and so at one point, we did talk about, ooh, give me, give me the breakdown of all the individuals and the composite on the ACT, and then I realized I might have been pushing them over the edge. So I said, I'm just kidding, just give me that composite, we'll be good, we'll be good, we'll be fine, yeah. So, all right, let's look at math. Our math data is not, and state assessments is not as good as our English data, but that doesn't mean we want to hide. That means we at least know where we need to get better, because when we know better, we can do better. I would also say for this, we've adopted a new math core curriculum and a new math intervention curriculum since those scores came out, and so I'm excited to see how we have started to turn the tide just a little bit and how we can progress even faster now as we get teachers and students into the new curriculums that our Learning Services team has vetted and adopted. So we have had from twenty-two to twenty-four, just a zero point nine percent increase in Level Ones, and then a seven point four percent decrease, Level Threes and Fours. Again, those aren't the numbers we want to see up there, but again, know better, do better, and that's what we want to see, and we're anxious to see what those twenty-twenty-five scores look like. And just for posterity, here's your similar breakdown of your math cap versus ACT versus graduation rate, just like you saw for English. And the math state assessment had similar data as the English state assessment in that those top half Level Twos, their data in all of the other metrics other than the state assessment actually matches kids that performed in the Level Three category instead of Level Two, so. Let's talk about AP enrollment. Okay? AP being Advanced Placement. So we offer everything from Advanced Placement Biology to Advanced Placement Calculus to Advanced Placement Psychology to Advanced Placement Government. We have a whole catalog of AP courses that kids can take. What you see on the screen in front of you is just Wichita Public Schools' data, and what it shows in the blue is unique kids. And then in the red is how many AP classes they were enrolled in. This is not broken down by class of, this is broken down by school year, right, because you have juniors and seniors, couple sophomores, AP Environmental Science, you'll get some sophomores in there. So these are by school year. So you can see in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had one thousand one hundred and fifty kids took an AP course, and they accounted for one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight AP classes, right? Because most of them, right, were taking probably more than one, right? So as we see, so you can see over the last four years how both the number of students enrolled in AP courses has gone up, and the number of courses they are enrolled in has gone up. So for kids, in four years, we've seen a twenty-six point two percent increase in unique students that are enrolled in AP courses in high school, and we've seen a forty-seven point four percent increase in the course enrollments, so the actual courses that they are enrolled in. That is substantial numbers. And when you take an AP class, you get to choose whether or not you're going to take an AP test. So let's look at some AP test data. What you see on the right, the blue, is AP exams taken, and what you see on the right in the red is AP exam scoring a three plus. But I want to go back and call your attention to something, because you might be going, okay, Lauren, why last school year were there only seven hundred and fourteen AP exams taken if, I'm going back, there were two thousand four hundred and seventy-four kids enrolled in an AP class? That's a legitimate question that you might be asking for yourself. So why might a kid not choose to take the AP test even though they are enrolled in the AP course? Well, there's a variety of reasons. One, a number of our AP classes you may also take for concurrent credit. So if I'm like, ugh, I'm not feeling real confident on the test, I would rather have my grade taken over time instead of a test, then they might say, I'm going to take this for concurrent credit instead of taking the AP test, right? There's no reason to do both, then you're just costing yourself money, right? So some kids are going to say, I'm going to take this for concurrent credit, I'm not going to take the AP test because I already got the college credit through taking concurrent credit. There's other kids, I'll never forget my AP chemistry teacher a long time ago, Mr. Deichl, I will never forget the very first day of AP chemistry, he said, if you think you're going to major or minor in chemistry, don't take the AP test. Mr. Deichl, why are you telling, that seems weird? Why are you telling us that? When you take an AP test, your base, you don't get that credit in high school, they just, or in college, they just say you don't have to take that class in college, and he said, if you're going to major or minor in that, you might have some gaps because you didn't take Chemistry 102 on the college campus, you just got it waived. You didn't take Chemistry 201 on the college campus, you just got it waived, and if you think you're going to major or minor, you might not want to take the AP test in that because you don't want those gaps to show up if it's something you're going to major or minor in. So those are some examples of reasons why kids might not want to take the test. Others, kids are like, I don't, I'm not a great test taker, so I'm really interested in challenging myself with this class, but I might not be interested in taking the test. So some examples of why those numbers might not match. Why a three plus? Well, a three plus is a post-secondary asset, remember those things that are coming back in our lives? If you get a, AP tests are scored on a five-point scale, so you can get a one, two, three, four, or five. Three, four, and five are what will get you college credit in some form on an AP test, right? So basically, all institutions will recognize a three, or a four, or a five, and get you credit in some way, shape, or form. So that's why we picked all the exams that are scoring a three plus. So what do we notice? In, just for, the state isn't on here, but I'm giving you some information. In twenty-one, twenty-two, forty-nine percent of the AP exams taken by Wichita Public Schools' students scored a three, four, or five. For the state, it was sixty-two percent. In twenty-two, twenty-three, fifty percent of Wichita Public Schools' students who took an AP exam scored a three, four, or five. For the state, it was sixty-six. Twenty-three, twenty-four, sixty-eight percent of Wichita Public Schools' students who took an AP test scored a three, four, or five. For the state, it was sixty-nine. Last year, seventy percent of Wichita Public Schools' students who took an AP exam scored a three, four, or five, which means they got college credit on that test, and the state was seventy-four percent. So what do we see? Four years, we see a fifty-two point two percent increase in the number of exams taken. We see a one hundred seventeen percent increase in the exam scoring a three plus. And we see a forty-two point five percent increase in our pass rate, pass rate, right, if you will. Okay? There's really not a passing of an AP exam, but if we consider three plus passing of our pass rate. These are pretty substantial numbers. And here's the crazy thing. AP isn't very large in Kansas compared to some other states because we have such a robust junior college system. So Kansas, I'll be, again, I told you earlier, I grew up in the Chicagoland area, I only had heard of one community college. I, I was like, what? So then I moved here, and I was like, well, they're like in every county, this is wild, it was fascinating. So concurrent credit wasn't a big thing where I went to high school. How did you get your college credit? You took all these AP tests, and you took all these AP exams to try to get the credit, because that wasn't a thing there, because we didn't have that robust junior college system that the state of Kansas has. So the state of Kansas kids are at an advantage. So that sets the table for, let's look at concurrent and dual credit. Concurrent and dual credit are on the screen. A lot of people think they are synonyms, they are not, so let's do a little bit of definition work here. It's about where you take the class. So concurrent credit is you are taking the class at your high school with your high school teacher, and you are getting awarded college credit for it. That's concurrent credit. Dual credit is you are taking the class at a college and coming and getting high school credit for it. I mean, so they go opposite directions. Okay, so it's about where you're taking the course and who you're taking the course from. Concurrent credit, you're taking it at the high school, right? I taught pre-calc trig, right? All the kids that took that for college credit with me, right, they were getting concurrent credit, okay? Kid wants to take Calc One at Butler over the summer and then add Calc One to their high school transcript, that kid's doing dual credit, okay? That's the difference between the two. So part of this is because we've become a lot better at tracking it, let's admit that. But let's look at concurrent and dual credit. So again, you see in the blue, those are unique students. So that's kids that we know are taking at least one concurrent or dual credit course. And then the red is dual credit course enrollments. So that's just like we saw with the APs earlier, right? You can take multiple concurrent or dual credit classes, just like you can take multiple AP classes. So what do we see? We see a two hundred and forty-three point nine percent increase in three years in the number of Wichita Public Schools' students who are taking a concurrent or dual credit class, okay? We also see a two hundred and fifty-six point one percent increase in the number of courses kids are taking for concurrent and dual credit while they're in high school. For post-secondary assets in concurrent and dual credit, you have to have nine or more college credit hours to get the post-secondary asset for concurrent or dual credit. What you see on this screen are credit hours, because course enrollments and credit hours are not the same thing. Because I might be enrolled in one course, college algebra, but I am getting three credit hours for that class, right? Or a very popular one, AP chemistry, I'm enrolled in one course, AP chemistry, but I'm getting five credit hours for that class in college, right? So what we've seen here is actual credit hours our kids have earned over the last three years. So we went from just over two thousand credits earned three years ago to over eight thousand credits earned by kids in Wichita Public Schools this last school year. That equates to a two hundred and fifty-eight point nine percent increase in three years of college credits. And then, like I said, for post-secondary assets, you have to have at least nine hours to count, it's nine plus. So if you have two hundred and forty-eight hours, you still get one post-secondary asset, right? If you've got nine hours, you still get one post-secondary asset. So what you see here is these are kids, individual kids, who got nine or more college credit hours in that school year. So two years ago, we had eighty kids get nine or more college credit hours. This past school year, three hundred and five Wichita Public Schools' students got at least nine credit hours, just in last school year. That's not their whole career, that's just in that school year they got nine-plus hours, right? So again, two hundred and eighty-one point three percent increase, substantial changes in the work that our students are doing at the college level. All right? Okay. Let's talk about ACT scores for a minute. Let's talk about ACT scores for a minute, okay? Wichita Public Schools offers ACT for free to every single junior. We've offered that for a number of years and we offer that in February for juniors to come in on a testing day and take the ACT. What you have on here is kids who scored a 21+ compared to the total number of kids who take the ACT. 21+ is there because that's the post-secondary asset, it's 21. That's what the state set, that's what we're measuring, okay? Keep in mind, we offer this to any student, okay? Kelly mentioned this at a previous board meeting, I don't remember how many months ago, but sometimes we compare like ACT scores in Kansas versus ACT scores in other states. But Kansas offers it to everyone, there are some other states that they don't offer it to everyone for free. And so those aren't really like comparisons because they don't have 85% of their senior class take the ACT like the state of Kansas does. So, in 2023, we had 351 kids, which is about 15% of the kids that took the ACT got a 21 or higher. Then in class of 2024, it was 443 kids, or just over 19% of kids who took the ACT. And then the class of 2025, we had 521 kids get a 21 or higher, which is just over 21%. So our post-secondary asset achievement rate is going up year over year. We've also had more kids take it year over year and more kids get a 21 or higher. So, in kids that have taken it over three years, we've seen an 8.3% increase. In kids that have gotten a 21 or higher, we've seen a 48.4% increase. And then in our percentage pass, if you will, pass meaning getting a post-secondary asset, we've seen a 36.7% increase. And then Work Keys joined the party two years ago. And Work Keys is a workplace readiness assessment. You can get a bronze, you can silver, a gold, or a platinum. The state considers silver plus a post-secondary asset. So, the kids that you see in the blue are kids that got a silver, or a gold, or a platinum, right? And once again, you can see, we've increased the kids that are taking it, we've increased the kids who are scoring a silver or higher, and we're increasing the percentage of kids who are earning a silver compared to overall test takers. So, 75.9 increase of kids taking it, 81.8% increase of kids getting the silver or higher, and then a 3.2% increase of kids who are earning that asset. And Kelly might want to say something about bronze and silver maybe.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to bring up, Techtron Aviation gives this test to new employees. I think that's relatively new. Their standard is bronze, so the post-secondary asset is silver. But, when one of our kids goes to Techtron to get a job, they don't say, what did you get on the state assessment? They say, what was your ACT Work Keys score, right? So we're trying to, and I'm leaning into your next slide here, we're trying to align with things that are actually relevant to industry and our area. And Spirit, I don't know what Boeing will do, but Spirit also uses the Work Keys, along with a lot of other smaller industries, a lot of the, oh, apprenticeship programs to the unions use ACT Work Keys and things like that, but just want to bring that up.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, it was really interesting to hear Techtron tell us, hey, we consider bronze meaning checkmark, whereas we don't give our kids a checkmark unless they get a silver or higher. So that was, that was interesting data for them to provide to us, yeah. So, and then Kelly's referencing the next one, which is credentials, okay? And credentials are a wide variety of things, but these are industry-recognized certifications. So, credentials are everything from food handlers, all the way through automotive service excellence, which is like, I had to ask my CTE friends, I said, which one do you think's the hardest one to get? And they were like, we think this one is the hardest one. That's relative, right? But I was trying to provide a span, right? Food handlers, all the way to automotive service excellence in what we can do. So what you've seen here are the credentials earned by Wichita Public School kids within that school year. Because once again, could kids earn some in their sophomore year and some in their junior year, and so, absolutely. So this is just within the school year and you can see the massive jump, especially this last school year, in our kids that are earning credentials. We have 25 CTE pathways where most of these credentials are coming from. You might have heard the number 27 last year. KSDE combined three pathways into one, so we still offer all the same classes, they just combined the pathway. So we don't, the kids didn't lose out on anything, but KSDE kind of trimmed it down a little bit, in case you're curious. So what you see there is almost a 100%, 96.5% increase over four years of credentials earned. And then, every single one of those credentials is a post-secondary asset. Every single one. So, that's pretty amazing. We, well, we're kind of arguing a little bit with the state. The state trimmed down there, like this counts as a post-secondary asset credential versus this is still a credential, so we're, we're in a little bit of a tift about that. It's okay, well, it's a healthy tift, so. So circling back to where we started, there's a giant and sign in goal number one. And, what I wanted to show you today is that it is an and, it's not an or. And that two things, increasing academic achievement and increasing graduation rate can be simultaneously true. And I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Before you do, I just wanted to point out one other thing and that's relevant, I think, to this conversation. And that's something that you hear sometimes, and I know I've seen on some social media about this idea that if a student gets a 1 or a 2 on the state assessment, they may be functionally illiterate. You're starting to see that a lot. If you get college credit, ACT, credential tests, ACT Work Keys, ACT scores, you're not functionally illiterate. And I hope, one of my goals would be to graduate kids that understand, when you say maybe, you're being deliberately misleading, right? Everyone in this room may be functionally illiterate, right? That's a true statement, it may be true, but it's completely misleading, right? We know that's not true. We know we have room to improve in reading, there is no doubt about that. You guys have been focused on that. But, it is also true that just because a kid gets a 1 on a state assessment, does not mean that they are illiterate. And we have all sorts of data to show that that is the case. So, we've got work to do, we are not perfect, our kids need to do better, we need to increase our scores, we're headed in good directions in a lot of areas, but it is not true that our kids, we're graduating kids that just are flat illiterate, that's a very misleading statement.
Lauren, with a lot of these numbers, so going back to slide 20 for the credentials earned, and you show a lot of, like in 21, 22, we had 2,033 credentials earned, can you give kind of a baseline of how many students we have in each class? Because I'm trying to set the stage of how many students are actually getting these extra credentials.
Yeah, so, in this particular slide, this is by school year instead of by class. Now, are you, do you have a lot of freshmen out there earning credentials? No, they're not high enough into the pathways to really get to those courses, right? So, but you're looking around 13,000 high school kids every year, right? If you take the freshmen out of that, you're looking at, hey, you're somewhere over 9,000 kids that are potentially earning these credits, yeah, these credentials.
We graduate about 3,000 students in each class.
Yeah, there's a roughly, it's pretty easy to just say there's about 3,000 kids in every grade level, is probably the easiest way to look at it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Melody?
Thank you. Lauren, the more that I listen to the presentations on increased academic achievement and graduation rates, you know, the more I learn. And, I, one question and then a commentary. So the question is, what would you say is, is factor for the huge increases, particularly in AP, both placement and enrollment? The tests, placement tests, as well as concurrent and dual credit? And of course, post-secondary asset? And, not so much ACT scores, but definitely ACT Work Keys. What would you say is primary in terms of why there is such a huge increase?
So I'd give a few reasons. One, I would say is a streamlined approach for our district in how we're going to message and tackle a lot of these things, right? So, several years ago, right, we didn't have an ACT testing day, right? But it was one of the things, the high school principals were like, it's really hard to create a conducive testing environment when the other kids are trying to go to class and we've got to have these other rooms of kids trying to take an ACT Work Keys or something like that. So we said, we can fix that. How do we create a better testing environment? Well, only the kids that are taking those high-stakes tests are there in that day and we send everybody else home so that we can create a conducive testing environment and give the kids, to the greatest extent possible for us, the optimal conditions to be there and be, the number of our campuses that on testing day, they're like, hey, pancakes for kids, right, in the morning? And they've got assistant principals out there working the grills so that a kid's going to have a full breakfast. They could also purchase one, right? But, well, we don't make our kids pay for breakfast, they could also show up and grab one, right? But, trying to create conditions within the system of Wichita Public Schools that allows the individual students to be as successful as possible and take advantage of those opportunities. I do think, us saying, hey, we're going to look at weighted grade point average, I think that has made a difference. Before, there were some kids that were like, oh, I'm going to weigh the risk-reward of taking that class, that might be a little higher. But now, the risk isn't quite as high for some of the kids because they get rewarded with additional grade point average points if they take an honors or an AP, or an advanced course. I think that, that matters in some kids' decision-making.
Is that three years ago weighted GPA?
Two, Holly? Two?
Two or three.
The years start running together, so.
And then ACT testing day is probably about four years old, Work Keys is about three years old.
Work Keys is only, yeah, is only three years old. And we've only given the Work Keys for three years. So last year, right, you saw that massive jump in Work Keys because we put a lot of energy and effort into telling our kids, here's what the Work Keys is, here's why you care about it. We even had to tell that to our teachers because I never took the Work Keys, right? It's a new assessment. And so, a lot of our staff, let me include myself in that, were like, what is this thing? And we had to do a lot of education around why that's important. I think we're getting better at helping kids, hey, concurrent credit versus dual credit versus AP, what's best for you in your situation? I think it's about creating systems that allow us to get that message out to the individual kid in the individual high schools. So, 22, 23, we switched to added weighted GPA, yeah.
So what I would, what I would kind of sum that up as, is that we are hugely intentional in how we corral and encourage and then support students in being successful in each one of these indicators of success. Poor education. And then that just takes me back to what one of the speakers said earlier, and, and I hear it, I hear it all the time, where most persons in the public will focus on low proficiency rates, just constantly. I'm one, I used to, until you actually get into our system and begin to look at, that is not the only criteria that you need to be looking at. And in fact, just as Kelly, Superintendent, has given to me a glowing example, and I have some examples too, that you get a 2 on your, you're showing up as 2 in proficiency, but yet you're scoring high in these other academic criteria. So, I think the more educating, the more information that we as a district take seriously and are intentional in showing that we understand that our proficiency rates are low. In fact, we understand that the national proficiency rates are low, as well as our state proficiency rates are low. We recognize that, we want to improve that. However, please take a moment and educate yourselves to learn that there are multiple very important and impactful measures that we should be looking at. I mean, it really is that simple. But we, the onus is on us to continue to do this. So, thank you.
I would say two things to that. One, I appreciate you lifting up the intentionality. When you see those stair steps over time, stair steps over time like that consistently from slide to slide, that doesn't happen on accident. You can accidentally get a spike in a year, but you can't get stair steps over time by accident. So I appreciate you lifting up that intentionality. And I don't think we can say enough times, there's that old comic about, right, if you judge an elephant on its ability, or what is it, if you judge a fish on its ability to climb a tree, it's not going to score very well. But that doesn't mean the fish doesn't have skills, right? That is so often what we do to, not just our students, but all students, is because we want to judge them on this test that measures something that they actually don't have skills in, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Melody. And also, I want to point out that you gave a great example of listening to what the people at the building level are needing and requesting and then responding to that. And so, that is something that I know that we've been trying to do a better job of, on a continuous improvement model, is what I always say. So, for building-level staff, please continue to bring your ideas forward because we are listening and we are trying to respond appropriately to suggestions and needs at all levels. Noc?
For, for SAT, the old score was, the old score was 2,400, and then the new score was 1,600. But, like, you know, there's a way you can, could convert that. I guess my question is, when we're talking about like this transition from how state assessment scores are going to be classified, if you will, I'm curious like if there's a conversion, if you will, between like, hey, here's what proficiency scores would look like in previous years, applying like this new like approach from 2025?
Well, I don't want to get out of pocket because Holly might come over here and tackle me, and I don't want to get on her bad side. But there is a, there is a state meeting that a bunch of us are actually going to attend on Wednesday to learn more information about all the things connected to the new cut scores and what does it mean, and is there a conversion of sorts? I think we always have to be careful of a conversion, no matter how it's supplied, if it is supplied, et cetera. So I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn and out of pocket, I'm going to, I'm going to wait for that meeting on Wednesday and abstain from anything else, yeah.
I would say, I think, the October board meeting, I think we'll have enough information to provide some sort of update. It might be more robust in November. But they are different, it's a different test with different standards and different questions, so it'll be different. Even the 300 being the middle, kind of the middle mark between the 2 and the 3, that's, all the scales will be completely different too. So, more to come on that, but I don't want to overpromise for Holly, but maybe October? Maybe, we'll see. And maybe.
Speaking of overpromising, maybe tomorrow.
And then, my last question, would it be appropriate to say that for a student who scores a 1 on the state assessment, whether that's for math or English, that they are also less likely to score a quote-unquote high score or a sufficient score on the ACT and also less likely to graduate?
Absolutely, they are absolutely correlated. I think where we get in trouble is where we do causation, right? Like, you scored a 1, therefore you can't, and we start saying what people can't do based off of score on one test. But yeah, they're, they're absolutely correlated. And I think you can see that correlation on the charts that showed the levels as you move up and the corresponding ACT scores and graduation rates, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I would throw out there too, one of, one of the other key factors I feel like is relevance. So, the, how relevant is the activity to the actual student? An ACT score, which is dollars, like literal dollars if you're going to college, kids take it several times, even get tutors, even, you know, whatever, a credential test, if you don't pass OSHA 10 safety, you don't get to go to the lab, so you've got to pass that test. So, there's relevance for that, as opposed to a state assessment your sophomore year that you've, you've probably taken, what would it be, 18 state assessments at that point in your life as a student? And it may not feel very relevant to what you're doing. So, we see a lot, and we wouldn't necessarily be a lot different, probably, on things that are in our life. If you need the job and you've got to get the score to get the job, you're going to work really, really hard at that because it's relevant, so I think that's another factor.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Sam?
Just two quick observations. I found it interesting that in the survey for the class of 2025, the two largest groups that were helpful to our students throughout high school was number one, the classroom teacher, and secondly, was parent and guardian. And then if you look at our rate of free lunch, which reflects our poverty level, which makes parenting harder, I think it's very clear what this, what this board has been trying to do with our budget is to support our teachers and really, that's one And really, that's one thing that our bond is about, is about providing space, innovation space, correct environmental controls, correct places for kids to learn. And the fact that when we talk about where is this board focused at, I think it's clear and it's important that we continue to keep our focus in these two areas. So, that really stood out. And I think it shows, as a public body, whether you're a city council member or a county commissioner, or on a cemetery board, it's all about focus. And so, I think what this report shows is the focus that we've had the last four to five, six years has actually produced results. And we can't take those results for granted. And we are not gonna be satisfied till we not only meet the state, but bypass what the state does. And definitely be the best in this region. So, that's just two things that really stood out to me on this report.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We're gonna bring this back, like I said, when we do graduation rate data. But man, are our staff champions or what? I mean, every single, every single employee group, right, is down here showing up in a huge way for our kids and for our high school kids to be the ones like, they, they are the ones that made a massive difference for me. That's, that's pretty powerful. That might've been my favorite part of the entire survey was seeing how much love our high school kids gave to our staff and their recognition of how much that that staff does for them every single day, even though we might not always act like that's true.
For, since we're educating, you know, and recording this, one thing that, and we probably need to make sure we tie together, the post-secondary assets, the 21 on the ACT, the nine credit hours, silver or higher on Work Keys, are now graduation requirements, right? Like, so those, you have to get at least two of those to graduate. And that isn't class of 26, that's class of 28?
Twenty-eight.
Okay. I keep looking for help, my phone of friends over here. But that, so it isn't as though, well, graduation rate is this and you can just do whatever with that and then there's these things. It is part of graduating, these post-secondary assets. Now, kids have freedom to pick which ones, AP tests are part of that?
Yep.
Okay.
AP test, participating in athletics and activities, there's a wide variety.
So anyway, I just wanna make sure that that connection is there. The graduation, the state of Kansas has decided that you really need two things. You need a piece of paper that's a diploma and a piece of paper that's a something else. A transcript from a college, a credential test, a silver Work Keys or all, and you guys have seen the list, but I just wanted to make sure we tied those two things together. They're not really, it is and, right? It's not, they're not separate. They're the same.
Okay, and Lauren, we've talked about Work Keys, but can you explain to the audience more about what Work Keys is exactly and how it's different and how it's also very relevant? Because we do talk a lot about college and/or career. And so, we do have a lot of students that go right into the workforce. And so, why, why is Work Keys important and relevant in the conversation?
Yeah, so Work Keys is basically a, an assessment about what your job readiness is to enter job readiness. So, you know, the regular ACT, which most people are familiar with, there's a reading section, there's a math section, right? There's a science section, et cetera. In the ACT Work Keys, there are sections like applied mathematics, right? Which would be math skills that you would need within the workplace, right? Understanding maybe taxes or documents like that. There's workplace documents is a section on the ACT Work Keys. So, can you read these technical pieces of literature related to the workplace and understand what you're supposed to do with those? And then the levels, the bronze, silver, gold, and platinum is basically your preparedness right now to do a certain percentage of jobs in the workforce. So, that's, that's really what the workplace is, very job-specific assessments. It is not what I call, it's not like a naked math, right? Naked math is like, three X plus seven equals four, right? That's a naked math problem. Like, it's just a, it's just a problem that's out there and like, what, why? Why? Why do I have to solve for X, right? An applied mathematics problem, they would give you some context, try to figure it out. And that context is going to be within the workplace, is an example on the Work Keys.
Okay, very good, thank you. Julie?
The other one on this sheet
Yes.
that I enjoy seeing is the one about plans after high school graduation. And how important we realize that that is to have those plans. And the percentage, you know, of the four-year college, the two-year college, the technical or trade school, the military or the full-time job. But only 11% unknown. And of course, we wanna get that even smaller.
Always, always a work in progress, right? Cross the finish line, make a new one. That's, that's what our job is. You also, for you guys at the board, you have the individual school versions of this. I think that's a fascinating dataset. Fascinating dataset that you might wanna peruse at some point. And, and you can, right? Like, when you look at those percentages of first in your family to graduate from high school and you watch them shift from building to building to building, very eye-opening. Not surprising, really, but very eye-opening, yeah.
Because I do wanna remind people, when we talk about numbers, these are human beings that we're talking about. And we're talking about preparing them for their future. And sometimes, when we take a snapshot of somebody, that doesn't always dictate their future. That, that shows where they're at in a certain place and time and maybe where they were that day. So let's not forget that people have the potential to change, they have the potential to grow. And, and we do wanna encourage that. And so, when we talk about numbers, let's not get lost, that these are, these are individual human beings that we're talking about and trying to unlock their potential. So, seeing no further questions, thank you, Lauren. Great presentation, great conversation, and we look forward to having future updates. Latona, next item?
2025, 26 budget report and adoption.
Welcome, Addie. Whenever you're ready, Addie.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Board of Education members. Superintendent Beilefeld, my name is Addie Lowell. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the district. I'm pleased to be with you this evening. I actually have no new information. We're gonna just kind of recap the budget development process, talk about how we've put some budget in place to help remove barriers for students. I love Dr. Hatfield's story about how our ACT scores have gone up over the last few years. And I think that's exactly the story of what removing barriers for our students means as soon as we take the, the cost of the ACT and the, the testing environment and, and make those equal opportunities for all of our students. Seeing what our kids are capable of, that's exactly what, that's exactly the work of our budget and, and the development process that we do to try and help remove barriers for students. So we're gonna go over that information this evening. My hope is that we adopt some resolutions and ultimately adopt the budget as it was proposed at the August Board of Education meeting. So I will maybe jump into our presentation. I for one am looking forward to being in our formal board space next month. I appreciate my colleague's ability to stand through her entire presentation. I'm gonna opt otherwise, so. So we are here, this is the final step of our budget process where hopefully we will move to adopt the proposed budget. In order to appropriately capture all of the necessary details for the statute related to building needs assessment, I'm just gonna repeat for the benefit of the board, some of the actions that we've taken, some of the decisions that we've made in light of, you know, the estimated time it would take for all students to achieve proficiency. We're gonna see where the, just reiterate, when the needs assessments were provided to the board, that the board evaluated those needs assessments, and then get into the weeds of how we use those assessments in the approval of the district budget. So the board answered question one of the building needs assessment process. And these needs and barriers have not changed tremendously since this statute came out. The board's done an excellent job in categorizing this based on stakeholder groups. And so, this is published on our website. We've listed out different barriers for students, staff, parents, and community. Overcoming barriers, so this is the building needs assessment work that our, our building-based staff did. And they did lots of work with site councils, with their building leadership teams, captured lots of opportunities for input on our budget process in terms of what barriers exist and what resources might need to be put into place to address those barriers. And four themes really emerged from that building-based work. Those were really around teacher and staff recruitment, including just pay and benefits in general for all staff, training as well as retaining ESOL sped, sped staff and paraprofessionals. Mental health and social emotional needs, including resources to address those needs, additional CST, which we define as counselors, social workers, and psychologists, and other social emotional learning programs. Parent involvement and support was one of the four themes. Having active opportunities for parents and guardians to be included in their school communities, family engagement and resources for students and families. And the final theme that emerged was attendance issues around chronic absenteeism and tardies. So just to recap kind of a very high level of our budget process. We have a large budget, it requires a lot of people, it requires a lot of input. It takes a full budget team, the entirety of the year to put together the budget. But if I could summarize it in four steps, this would be it. So, we, we kind of evaluate all core services for schools. That means every single school is going to be afforded the opportunity to have a kindergarten teacher, a first-grade teacher, a second-grade teacher, a principal, a custodian, a nutrition service worker, et cetera. Those are just the basic bare minimum needs of all of our schools regardless of the, the at-risk or overarching needs of any particular student group. So we make sure that every school is provided with those core services. Then we evaluate required services that we need to provide for special education students as well as ESOL services for ELL learners. So those include additional teachers, para educators, counselors, psychologists, social workers, speech-language pathologists, nurses, et cetera. Then we really look at specific populations. And there's no one answer that applies to every school. Every community is different, every leader is different. And so, there's not one answer that solves even the same problem for two different school communities. And so, we really have to evaluate meeting the needs of at-risk students through an individual building process, which is our building needs assessment process. We get requests for tutors, intervention programs in curriculum, summer school, extended learning opportunities, extra classroom supports, CST, which is your counselor, social worker, psychologist, and additional behavior positions are some frequently requested items through that individualized building needs assessment process. Anything that's left is used. And generally, all of these pillars kind of line horizontally and vertically. So, our program spending aligned to the strategic plan, right? A lot of those initiatives are the same as the building needs assessment requests are the same as supporting our special education and ELL learners. It's all related to academic improvement and achievement for our students, so. So finally, we put together kind of a big recap, a big 10 recap of all the things that we invested in to, you know, based on all of the feedback that we got from our individual buildings. There's nine boxes, the 10th being the wage package that the Board of Education offered to our negotiated unions this year, which was a compensation package of 5.47%. So that was kind of the big 10th item. Some of the other budget actions that we were actually able to take in this year's budget that's proposed to be adopted this evening included some additional core services for schools, newcomer supports, an expanded district-wide ESOL program, additional counselor, social worker, and psychologist positions where we could, additional behavior supports for schools, unified pre-K classrooms in four additional schools, the new community schools pilot that's taking place in six of our schools, some small group instruction paras, and a big expansion of our everyday labs to help address attendance issues in schools. So those were the big 10 items that are reflected in the budget that's proposed this evening. So questions for the BOE to answer. Your, the final question of the building needs assessment process is around the time it may take for all students to achieve proficiency above level two. And so, after receiving the building needs assessments back in the, for the May Board of Education meeting, we reviewed all of the data, we reviewed the state of our state assessment scores, made some recommendations and some, and proposed some thoughts around how to answer this question. And at last, our last board meeting, we were able to come up with a range of the district goal being 32 to 50% of students performing at level three and four by 2030. This accounts for a 2% increase year-over-year at a minimum for our students to achieve that goal. Additionally, we like to align the answer to this question to our strategic plan goals as well, so that way everything is in alignment. And so, that involves decreasing the percentage of students scoring a one from 47.6% to 44.6% by the spring 2025 third-grade reading assessment date. So those, those were the answers that we elected during the August board meeting. So again, I don't have new information on the budget this evening. Our total budget net of transfers, and, and the two things that the board is really approving this evening is the total legal maximum by fund as well as the mil rates for each fund individually. And so, our total proposed budget was $1,009,854,676. And we have a flat mil rate, again, of 51.387. So this reflects the board's commitment to taking a conservative approach to the district's mil rate. We did not increase our mil rate, we did not decrease it this year. It's flat compared to last year. This board has taken every opportunity to reduce the mil as we have not needed it to support the district's budget. And so, this mil rate reflects that, that as well. I love this pie chart. So every year, we bring how much of our operating budget directly impacts students. This year, 87.2% of our operating budget goes directly in the classroom, 53.5% in instruction. We have to have lights, we have to have transportation, we have to have food service, right? All of those things are required for our kids to attend our buildings during the day. So you have a very small percentage that still go to some of the things like maintaining our facilities, business and operations support. General administration for the district is very low at 1.1%. So a huge portion of our operating budget directly impacts students. And I think that's important to, to celebrate and get excited about. Finally, just, yeah.
Can you describe, or what's the definition of other support services?
So, it's, this is based on a state code, it's a technical answer. The pieces of the budget that go into that line item are related to the childcare development centers on our high schools. So it's a community service, it's, that's, that's what that. It's still, still kids, just not all Wichita Public Schools kids. So hopefully, to wrap us up, and then I'll turn it over to the board for questions. Some of our proposed budget highlights include a total budget of just over $1 billion with our operating budget sitting at $615 million. Our budget is balanced. We don't celebrate that enough, the fact that Wichita Public Schools is always able to propose and adopt a balanced budget. We have no remaining budget deficits that will carry over into any future fiscal years. The base state aid per pupil is up to 5615. Still the lowest mil rate in 15 years at 51.387 mils. Our compensation package did outpace the three-year average CPI. So we were able to offer staff a 5.47 compensation package this year over the 4.4% CPI increase that we got to the base state aid per pupil. And federal funds for at-risk students are still anticipated for fiscal year '26. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the board for any questions ahead of motions.
I have a, I have a question. I was at District Advisory Board for Commissioner Howell today, and he had shared some, everyone's budget season, you know, everyone's going through this right now. He shared mil rate data from all of the cities in Sedgwick County. And I was amazed at the, at the range. I had no idea that some cities were like in the 30s and somewhere in the 60s. I mean, a big, big range. So, could you tell us, you know, we are here operating for the kids of So could you tell us, you know, we are here operating for the kids of Wichita Public Schools. But at the same time, we are essentially in competition with surrounding districts, right? Just like our cities are, they have to decide, how do I come to, you know, be more competitive as a city? How do we, how do we rank as far as mil rate goes with our surrounding neighbors?
If you look at the surrounding suburban districts, we are the lowest mil rate in comparison. I don't have all their final figures for fiscal year '26, but we've been the lowest for as long as I've been a part of the district. So we sit at 51. I would say Andover is between 67 and 68. So if you live in the Andover suburb, you're going to be paying more in, in a mil rate for your property taxes. We are the lowest by far.
And we do have on our website, you want to tell people where to find the, the Budget at a Glance?
Absolutely.
You guys put a chart in there every year.
We do. So on the Wichita Public Schools website, so usd259.org/financialservices, if you scroll down just one full page, you'll get to the location where we have all of our financial publications. We try to be as transparent and accessible as possible. We publish a, our own version of a Budget at a Glance, which we hope is an effort to simplify K-12 school finance. And so we do give figures for surrounding districts and the mil rate history, which again celebrates the board's commitment to offering property tax relief wherever possible.
So also one of the things on there, just because people always have a lot of questions about the budget and, and school finance, you'd be hard pressed to find something more complicated than school finance. And so on that same Budget at a Glance document, you can also see the spending per program and what portion of the budget that is, and then also the percentage of that portion that's restricted. So can you go over restricted funds versus unrestricted funds?
Sure. So about 80% of the funds we receive are restricted by purpose. That means that either local, state, or federal government has defined the expenditures that we can utilize those funds for. At-risk services for students is $130 million budget that has some of the most restrictive uses on it. In order to do it, it has to be on a very small list that's approved through multiple different boards, through KSDE, through the, the State Board of Education. So it's very restrictive. Federal funds are that way. Nutrition service funds are that way. Special education funds are that way. Most of the weighted funds that Wichita Public Schools receives ends up being spent and transferred over to a restricted purpose. And that's again, 80% of our budget. So you'll see those figures by program, and there's definitions for unrestricted and restricted. That just means that 20% of our budget is available to do things that are, you know, that, to support things like operating costs or transportation increases, things of that, that nature. So we're very limited in terms of what we can do with those funds. They have to be sent, spent on certain students for certain services.
Thank you. Hazel?
Yes, I'd like to address, earlier we had a speaker comment that all of her taxes are going, paying to the school board. Do we actually receive all the money that's labeled "school board" on the tax bill? Can you explain that, how that process works?
So if you live in the Wichita Public Schools boundary, you likely have three taxing jurisdictions that show up on your property tax bill. Wichita Public Schools has four separate mil levies that we assess. So it's not easy to read on your property tax statement or on the estimated revenue neutral rate tax statement that probably went out in the last two or three weeks, I would say. So we do get remitted all of the funds that are related to the USD 259 mil rate on your property tax statement. But we are one of two to three other municipalities or government entities that may be levying taxes on your property taxes. So we're not the only ones.
Melody?
Thank you. When looking at, and I am in the Budget at a Glance booklet also, for anyone that would want to know, this is pages six and seven, Budget Foundations. So just as.
Last year's budget.
Yes, it's last year's budget. But I have kind of a basic comment and, and question. Capital budget reserves, it's the very last item that they're going to see. And so last year it was 54 million point one, 54.1. A lot of persons are not clear on what a district should be doing with those dollars. Typically, how are those dollars utilized?
So I don't have the page in front of me to reference the exact exhibit from last year's budget that you're speaking to, but I'll try to give a general response to the question. So when we have capital outlay reserves, we have to fund the capital outlay budget for six months before we get any kind of reimbursement from either state aid or property taxes. And so we have to carry some reserves and capital outlay just to cash flow the start of the year. If we're talking about capital outlay in terms of budgeted funds and not cash reserves, we do keep a budget of capital outlay funds. You may see on the notice of hearing that went out for the '25-'26 budget, our capital outlay budget was $129 million. That does not mean we are going to spend $129 million. It means that we have budgeted some capital outlay reserves just to make sure that should the district have some extraordinary or emergent need for one of its facilities, we have the budget authority to, to enact and to use those funds to support any repairs and maintenance that may be needed. So there's kind of two different answers to that question. We have to have capital outlay cash reserves just to make it through the first six months of the year and be able to afford the ongoing business of the district. We also have to have budgeted reserves and capital outlay to make sure that Luke's team can, can act and, and support our buildings when they need to.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, because believe it or not, sometimes state and/or federal dollars do not come in, in the appropriated timeline. So therefore, we're still having to pay those bills so that reserve can aid us in doing that. So just wanted to be able to add that. Thanks.
Thank you, Melody. Julie?
Another just general question for the public. One of our speakers earlier was talking about how much their taxes have raised. And yet, you specified in your presentation that we didn't increase our mil levy. So can you explain that?
Sure.
And then secondly, give an illustration for if you have a certain property value of home, what your typical tax payment would be based on that?
Sure. So our mil rate stayed flat, but that does not mean that everyone's assessed property value stayed flat. Some of the property tax owners in our jurisdiction, on average, received an 8.7% increase to their assessed valuation this year. That doesn't mean everyone did. I know I certainly did. Mine was larger than that 8.7%. I'm happy to pay my taxes to support Wichita Public Schools, the city of Park City where I reside, and all the other municipalities. I was a, I was a student once. I do have students in Wichita Public Schools as a community. You know, people work and, and are all trained and benefited by public education. And so, yes, while we are keeping the mil rate flat, we do still have to capture some of that assessed value increase because just like our property tax owners' expenses are increasing, so are ours. Our salaries are going up. We have to offer teachers a CPI increase to their salary just to retain qualified, highly qualified staff in our buildings. We, our, our transportation costs, our utilities costs, all go up just the same as they do to our taxpayers. So the median home price right now in Wichita is around $200,000. So last year, if your, the appraised value of your, yeah, the appraised value of your home was $200,000, that means if you had an 8.7% increase, it's in the $217,000 range. Your property taxes last year, I think, would be around $1,009. And they've gone up to, essentially, it's $8.57 per month in additional property taxes just due to the average assessed value increase of 8.7%. It's not a straight across metric, right? Like mine went up far more than the 8.7. Some didn't receive any property tax increase this year. So it's hard to, to apply it across the board or calculate specifically how it will impact each individual taxpayer. That is the benefit of those revenue neutral tax statements that go out. It helps to give a picture of what may happen to your taxes based on our estimated or proposed mil rate.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Just to go over and explain some of the things and processes that we take when adopting the budget, because this is not just the last few meetings that we use to adopt the budget. This really is a year-long process. And I always say a continuous improvement model that we, we try to take. And so for people that don't know what the building needs assessment is, it is for printout, it is, it is this book that we go through, the board does, and it's a, a couple pages for each building, each learning center in our district. And we go through, and all the buildings answer the same questions. And that's how we learn and hear from their building leadership and their site council, what their needs are, what, what their recommendations for the budget would be. What do they need in their building to be more successful and meet the academic needs of the students in their building? And so if you go back to, I think it's slide seven, yeah, for the questions to the BOE on what recommendations and allocation should be taken to address and remove barriers, that information comes directly from the building needs assessment. That comes from having conversations with building leaders, with teachers, with paras, with all of the building staff to find out what do they need to be successful? Because it's not just the district staff saying, here's what we're going to do to make sure that we can be successful. We're going out to the teachers that are actually with the students day in and day out, well, you need to be successful. And it's not a perfect model, but we are, we are trying to continue to improve on that. And so, leading up to that, Kelly, can you talk about what we're doing this year to also get more feedback from the building staff and to try to continue to improve upon that model as we constantly look at our budget and look at philosophies of how we can be more successful to meet the academic needs of students?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to. So, you know, when we talk about barriers, that's a, that's broad, right? I mean, that's a broad term. What are the barriers that our students have? They have barriers in learning English. They have barriers with disabilities. They have barriers with attendance and transportation. But we also focus on what are the school barriers? Like, I need an extra para in my classroom, or I need behavioral supports because students have more behavioral needs than they used to. We have, I'm trying to think of the things on the list. Oh, unified pre-K, ESOL, right? Like, so what are the internal barriers that we can control? But when we create the big book, we kind of ask it in a general sense, and we get all sorts of different responses to that. We heard a, a teacher speak tonight about barriers. Barriers of poor climate control in her classroom, right? That allows, it's hard to learn in that environment. So we've committed this fall to breaking out the needs assessment into a, really a facilities needs assessment. And Dr. Noble and Gil Alvarez and I are dividing up all 90 buildings, and we're going to go on the road. And we're going to go to every building and talk to every staff and hear directly from them. We did a pilot, or kind of a guinea pig with, with one elementary school. And we came with our couple things that we thought was on the list. And they said, well, actually, you know, you were going to fix this part of the roof. The whole thing needs fixed because it leaks here, and it leaks here, and it leaks here, right? Thank you. That's what we needed. We needed to hear that. And so to really engage in that level, at the building level, with the people that are in the trenches doing the work is critical. And I don't think we should do that just one time for facilities. I think it's really an ongoing, there's a curriculum discussion. There's a finance discussion, right? And everybody doesn't know all the ins and outs of all the details of it, right? You don't need to be able to fix the HVAC to say, hey, the HVAC doesn't work, right? So we can hear that feedback and then give it to our team of experts to fix. We can do the same thing with finance. We can do the same thing with curriculum. We do it probably the best with curriculum in a lot of ways, with piloting textbooks and getting feedback and doing surveys. And every professional learning that we do, we get feedback from staff on those. But I think we can be much more present and much more intentional. And instead of just a, kind of a procedural checkbox needs assessment that we've been doing, really try to make a true, authentic engagement. And it's not that we haven't done that in the past. I'm just thinking we're being more intentional than we've ever been.
Can you also explain how we're, what our philosophy is for aligning the budget to meet the students' academic needs? Because a lot of it, we're meeting required needs from either federal regulations or state regulations. But what is our, what is the overall philosophy of what we're trying to do to accomplish and increase student outcomes through the budget?
Yeah, and it's, it's building-based, which makes it challenging. At the bottom of the pyramid is that, you know, kind of base, everybody gets, everyone gets a principal. Everyone gets a custodial staff. Everyone gets nutrition services, right? Everyone gets a base level of everything. But if, if you drive through our community often, the Bel Air neighborhood has different needs than Harry Street that's at the corner of Broadway and Lincoln, right? Those two schools have very different needs. And so we try to allow the buildings to help us with making those decisions, right? There is a base that we want everyone to have, you know, a standardized level of education. But then as some buildings need more, that's where we're providing more. And we're trying to do that both in the classroom, but also within the community. Community schools, I think, is a, is a great example of that. That there is really something more than just what goes on in the classroom to help get our kids ready. They have to be at school. They have to be fed. They have to feel safe, all of those sorts of things too. So that's, it's a little bit different than just, you know, putting money into, into a, a singular classroom. But it's an investment, I think, in our kids holistically because you can't teach an empty chair, right? So if kids don't show up to school for whatever reason, we're never going to make the gains that we want to make with our students. We have to have kids that are there. And so we feel like a stronger community connection can really improve that. That trust with the school, but also the, the ability for kids to, you know, the barriers of attendance that are also the case. So I'm not sure if that exactly answers it.
Yeah, I, I would, our budget is so big. And I think we heard tonight from a couple of comments that what are they getting, what are taxpayers getting out of their investment? Because as taxpayers, we are compelled investors. Whether you want to invest in the tax, in the school system or not, we are investing in the school system. And so I think when there's a disconnect between what they're paying in taxes and what they're seeing, then I think we need to be a little bit more explicit in what our philosophy is and, and raising stu-, and educating students and, I always say unlocking their potential. Because I think there is that disconnect. And so trying to paint a, a more vivid picture of what that looks like.
Yeah, I think, I think two things. I think one, I think most of us, probably the majority of people in this room, had somebody invest in us in our lives, and we are where we're at because of that. We, most of us attended a public school or a public university at some point in our life. We were able to do that because somebody else footed the bill for us to be successful, right? And so I think there's that component to it, that there's an obligation to our community that if we care about the wellbeing of our kids, if we care about our teachers, that we need to support them, right? Because somebody supported us. So I think that's one piece of it. The other thing is what Lauren talked about. And, and really, if you follow our board meetings, if you watched our board meetings, what we're trying to do is really align with helping our kids be successful after high school and be successful after high school within the Wichita community. So we value what Texttron or Ascension Via Christi, we value what they care about more so than we value what somebody in New York or California, whatever, cares about. We're trying to align with what they want. What they want are the things that Lauren was talking about. Give us kids with college credit. Make sure they have these credentials. Make sure that they're able to, to get a blank score on the ACT. They're not asking us for what is their state assessment score, right? So not that that isn't valid, but we are really trying to listen to our community and say, what does the community want? What do they value? Well, they value kids that show up. They value kids that work hard, that get off their phone, that, right, can, can fill out a resume and can apply for a job. We're trying to help our kids with all of those things. Keep in mind that one out of five of our kids, they're first in the family to graduate high school. So there's not a lot of social capital for a lot of our kids to know how to navigate the world beyond high school. So we're really trying to get them prepared for that, get them connected with work-based learning to our community so that our community sees the value. And I think if you talk to, you know, the HR department at Texttron, I think they would say Wichita Public Schools is getting a, I don't know about A+, but a solid A, maybe A-, right? That they would hire every single one of our kids that attends the Future Ready Center and finish it 100%. They would hire 100% of those kids. They would hire 100% of those kids.
Say what they want.
Right. That those students that get through that program, one of them was just telling me, the credentials that he earned just by being there, right? Just by the test that he takes while he's there, he got sixth place in National Skills USA just by printing out his credentials and turning him in. He didn't do anything extra, he just did the Future Ready Center program. So we are really trying to align locally with what our industry needs. And that doesn't mean entry-level jobs for everybody, right? That, I don't want to, we're not, look at all the AP tests we're taking, 11% of our students, I think, took an AP test and passed it. That's pretty incredible. So we want post-secondary success, we want entry-level success, we want kids going to tech school. Really, what you were saying, just to achieve whatever the potential is, right? Whatever goals that student has for their family, we want to help them get there. And I think we're doing a very good job of aligning locally with our business and industry in order to make that happen for kids.
Very good. One of the other comments that I heard tonight from the public speakers is the school is taxing higher than the city and the county. Can you talk to the number of employees and the number of students for Wichita Public Schools compared to Cedric County and the city of Wichita?
Uh...
And I know there's other taxing authorities and everything, but...
Um, I certainly do not know the number of employees the city or the county have. I can quote our numbers. We employ approximately 5,500 full-time equivalent employees, 8,000 at any given time if you include kind of temporary, part-time, or substitute employees. We pay over 10,000 people a year. Our, you know, our operating budget is 615 million. We are the largest municipality in the area in terms of the size of our operating budget. We love to quote that we're the 10th largest city in the state of Kansas just because of our size. So I hope that answers that part of your question.
Yeah. I think most people don't understand that the Wichita Public Schools usually employs about twice as many people than the city does and more than the county, and so when they see USC 259 listed four times on their tax bill, it often leads to confusion, and we do tax more than the city and the county as well. And so, can you also explain, I know Hazel had mentioned it, but USC 259 is listed four times on the tax bill. Can you kind of walk through that briefly, just for further explanation?
Yeah. So we, we actually have five different mill rates, but the way that the county lumps a couple of them together. So you've got your 20 mills of general fund, that's state statute, that's mandated by state statute, we have no opportunity to change that. You've got your LOB, which is a factor of your general fund resolution. I hope we are able to adopt this evening. Right now, our LOB is proposed at 33% of our general fund, and so we levy local taxes for that. There's eight mills of capital outlay. Again, that's the maximum amount that we can levy for capital outlay, and I would never recommend in the seat considering the huge backlog of facilities' needs that we have to levy less than those eight mills. We also levy for bond and interest payments. Those are debt service payments, obligations that the district committed to from the 2000 and 2008 bonds, that we have future obligations to pay. The final bond and interest payment is set for fiscal year '29, and so the mill rate we have established is in service of those future obligations. We also have a very small mill levy for some special liability, which is some board fees, judgments, et cetera. So those five get consolidated, the supplemental general or LOB fund and the special liability go to one line, but those are the four lines that you see, and they add up to our total mill rate.
Thank you. Stan?
For you, President and Superintendent and our Board Clerk and our Chief Financial Officer, can I combine these three recommended actions into one motion, or do you need three different motions?
We need three different motions, and then...
Got it.
Everybody will have to...
Because we don't have the roll call feature available, I have to take a roll call vote for the two resolutions, so, yeah.
I appreciate your concern. So with that, I see no further questions, so...
So with that, I'd like to recommend Action 1 of the three, and that is District Administration recommends the Board adopt Resolution 2025-03, expressing the property taxation policy with respect to exceeding the revenue-neutral tax rate for financing the annual budget for 2025-26.
Second.
Motion made by Melody, seconded by Stan. And what I'll do is I'll say the board member's name and just say yes or no for the vote, and our Board Clerk will record that. So, Noc?
Yes.
Hazel?
Yes.
Diane, yes? Melody?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathy?
No.
Motion passes, six to one.
Recommendation, Action 2 of 3. District Administration recommends that the Board adopt Resolution 2025-04, a resolution to authorize the supplemental general LOB budget percentage at an amount of 33% of the 2025-26 budget.
Second.
Motion made by Melody, seconded by Stan. Noc?
Yes.
Hazel?
Yes.
Diane, yes? Melody?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathy?
No.
Motion passes, six to one.
And recommended Action 3 of 3. District Administration recommends that the Board adopt the 2025-26 budget as proposed.
Second. Motion made by Melody, seconded by Julie. Noc?
No.
Hazel?
Yes.
We don't... Diane?
We don't.
Oh, we can just do a hands?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes, five to. Okay, Latona, next item?
I believe it's consent.
For the public's information, the purpose of the consent agenda is to help the Board handle routine matters efficiently so that the Board can spend more time reviewing, monitoring, and discussing the educational issues of the Wichita Public Schools. Students' academic success is the top priority for the Board of Education. Board members review these items in detail during the Agenda Review Workshops held at 10:30 a.m. on the Fridays prior to each regular board meeting here at the AMAC Building. These workshops are open to the public, but no action is taken. The workshop is for discussion and questions only, and your presence is always welcome. Is there a motion to approve consent?
I have a motion to approve the consent.
Okay, motion made by Kathy, seconded by Stan. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes, six to one. Latona, next item?
Kansas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly.
Let me get down there. Okay, so the purpose of this is the Kansas Association of School Boards, also known as KASB, Annual Convention will be held at the Hyatt Regency in Wichita on November 14th through 16th, 2025. During the convention's delegate assembly, the annual business meeting of the association, delegates will elect the KASB president-elect, designee, and determine the association's legislative positions and priorities, which will be held on November 15th. We would ask that the Board, we would ask for the Board to appoint a delegate and an alternate to represent the district at the 25, 2025 Delegate Assembly. Kathy?
I would nominate Julie Hedrick for this position as delegate.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Melody. And is there a recommendation for a, looks like, I think we need to have a...
Alternate?
Alternate.
I recommend Melody.
I second it.
Okay, motion made, well, hold on. Let's do the first motion first. So a motion made by Kathy, seconded by Melody, in favor of Julie. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes, seven to zero. The second motion was made by Julie, seconded by...
For Melody.
Hazel, sorry, thank you, for Melody to be the alternate. All in favor, raise your hand. You're not going to vote for yourself? Motion passes, seven to zero. Latona, next item?
Reports and requests, Superintendent's report.
Okay, you're up.
All righty. Got a couple things. One of the things I wanted to highlight was in our consent agenda tonight, and some of the administration from the Classical School just left because you voted, they voted in affirmative for it, but I did want to bring up selling of two of our buildings that we have listed, Payne Elementary and Clark Elementary, a few months ago, a while back. We went through a, we have a standing committee that deals with our closed buildings, and we have a scoring rubric that every offer that we get, as we go to sell them, goes through the scoring rubric, and we engage community members that are neighbors to the facilities about the use of them. So tonight, you all voted six to one to vote to sell Clark Elementary to the Classical School and what was formerly Payne Elementary to Pixius, which is a youth mental health support facility. So the exciting part about this for me is that I feel like the engagement with the neighbors around these buildings were really what led us to settling on these two offers. These two communities will be good partners, that will be, will keep the school site intact for the most part, and the constituents we talked to that live around these areas were excited to have these groups come in. So I wanted to highlight that, and we'll be sharing more about that here in the next week. State assessment scores, Noc had asked the question, it is a little bit of a moving target as far as when. The State Board of Ed, they've already established the cut scores, they meet again this week, so we're not exactly sure when we'll have public new state assessment scores. And this year, I keep looking at my friends, this year's scores are baseline anyway, preliminary. So you'll, we'll keep you updated on that, but watch for that because there'll be more information coming on that. A couple updates on enrollment. We still have kids coming in, kids coming in to enroll. That's obviously something that happens all year. We do expect a decline. We'll wait until September 20th to really roll out the impact of that and, you know, what grade levels and what areas of town and all that kind of stuff. But we have seen just early, kind of anecdotal, broad brush, a lot of our schools with significant newcomer classrooms, those schools are down in enrollment. So I think that some of the, what we've seen over the past few years, high influx of refugee immigrant population has decreased for this year. And then the last thing, sorry, one more thing. Oh, the last thing I wanted to lift up was about another thing on consent agenda. We have talked, we have approved a number of community partnerships with that, too. So I talked about community schools earlier tonight, but we have a number of mentoring programs that work with our youth and our schools, too. We can't do this without the entire community, right? And I think, you know, we talk about, Diane, I appreciated that you talked about, you know, these aren't just numbers, these are human beings. In the same way, you know, these aren't just taxpayers, right? They're our neighbors, right? So thank you to the taxpayers for supporting our kids. It makes a difference. I know, I know it's challenging, and I know, you know, I understand where the, where the community members are coming from, especially on fixed incomes, and we hear that a lot. So I understand the challenge, but our kids are worth it. We are going to do the best we can to take those resources and be efficient with them and make the most out of them and get great outcomes for kids. But I do just want to say thank you to the community for stepping up and supporting our kids. Our kids are worth it. We've got a lot of them with a lot of needs. We didn't, we didn't hit on this much, but, you know, we have about 25, or 20% of our students have a disability, about 20% of our students don't speak English as a first language. We have challenges, we have significant challenges, and we need a community to help us to achieve our goals. So thank you to the speakers that were here tonight and the engagement we've had, but thank you to the taxpayers for helping our kids. That's it.
Very good. Latona, next item?
New business and Board of Education requests.
From the Board? Okay, seeing none, next item?
Adjournment.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I will. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Melody. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes, seven to zero. We are adjourned, thank you.